So I'll call this to order at 6:07. Sorry for the tardiness. And we have, I think, a few changes to the agenda. Wayne and I want to add an executive session for legal at the end. And we'll do it all in one fell swoop as a motion. But and then a legislative update I'd like to add just real quick, maybe before the document review. Anybody have anything else?
To add something to executive session, please?
Is it related to legal personnel or contracts?
Legal.
Legal, okay.
Thank you.
So we'll just extend that. And we'll do that at the end after we approve minutes and pay order. So can I get a motion for an executive session to be added as well as a legislative update?
So moved?
Moved by Jeremy?
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, members of the public. We have some members of community group, but I don't know. Are you guys here to share now or are you just listening?
Mostly listening.
Mostly listening?
Mostly listening.
Okay.
I have, I have two issues that I can bring up as the budget arises or I can just draw them out.
I think that's same.
Okay. I have, we have a little preamble for the budget, so we'll do that. Maybe that'll answer your questions or table until next time. But members of the faculty are not here.
Oh, who's here from the public?
But we will, I guess.
Oh, yeah, names for Peter.
Oh, names, sorry.
Oh, he's gonna get his hand down.
I probably should have put this under members of the faculty, so I'll just quickly move it up. But we did receive a letter of intent from the teachers to negotiate. And they've requested that we pick a December date. And I think that the process is we should assign two board members or nominate two board members to be in charge of that. But we should all probably pick the date now to share with them and then set the meeting. So she wanted to get us, she wanted us to get her two dates. So if we could open up her calendars and see. But I'm gonna go ahead and nominate. Can I ask chair? I don't think I can. But I'm gonna put out the names of Dan and Selena as our negotiating folks. For the teachers.
Mine would be.
Any good comments, Selena?
Acceptances?
So do we need someone else to move that?
We need two, so we need two people. But I think that, you know, everybody can join the meeting if you're available and you need to. So yes, we'll need a motion to appoint two negotiators on behalf of the school board.
Motion to appoint Selena and Dan as negotiators with the faculty. On behalf of the school board.
It means that they can make decisions if we're not there. That's basically what I mean. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selena. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And a date.
Yeah, so.
That's gonna be tricky.
Yeah, who, what do we got? They, they're asking us to, to start with two proposed dates and then they'll see if they can match them. Is that the way?
Yeah, I'm guessing they probably would prefer it to be in the afternoon as well, like after school time maybe.
Well, Selena, that's gonna depend more on you than me, so you pick a couple and I, I'll be there.
So when are we looking, December?
Yeah. So I think, Bill, could you remind me? I don't know if your calendar shows it, but do we have, when's our board meeting for the first December? Is that the eighth that we say?
Wednesday, the eighth.
Wednesday, the eighth, right? And then we have our regular meeting the twenty, the sixteenth, yes. So I would say not the eighth and the sixteenth, just for your own sanity.
Oh, yeah. Really Tuesdays and Thursdays are probably the better days.
Okay.
I'm available Tuesday after five.
Tuesdays at seven?
Yep.
So we could do, I could say the seventh and the fourteenth, Bill?
How about earlier on Thursday, just because I think by five, most of the faculty here would have left.
The only thing that I know about Thursday is Jesslyn is teaching after school until 4:30 on Thursday.
So she.
So she wouldn't be available until five anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
If she wouldn't want to, you know, stay while she was here, I don't know. But Thursdays at five is also the other option.
So seven and fourteen sounds like a good, I mean, they want two, let's throw those out and see what happens.
Okay, seventh, fourteenth. I'll write them back and see what they say. You're saying after five, right?
Yeah.
And it'll, it could be on Zoom too since it's.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's just tricky because.
It's private negotiations then.
I mean, our school ends later than here, so that's the other hard part. You know, like high school, it's gonna have until 3:30 and then I'm contracted till 4:30.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, document review. So I forget the policy number, Selena, but we were meant to warn a policy at the last meeting, but we put it off simply because it wasn't prudent. Remember that policy number?
I can read two seconds.
And its intent?
It had to do with tuition stuff.
Does. And it was related to secular institutions, I think?
Yeah, and then Lori did a, a look over to it to kind of make sure that it was fit within our thing. Uh, let's see.
Pulling up myself.
C26.
Okay. And I'm assuming there were no changes and you can just warn it as such. So I'll entertain a motion to warn, not adopt, we'll adopt at the next meeting, C26.
Aye, so moved.
Moved by Dan.
Second.
Seconded by Selena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So Australian ballot warning. As you know, we had a contingency this week that we had to attend to with Forrest. In a panic wrote me and said I need to get this signed. So I think, you know, most people signed it today, but I think since it's the same day, we could adopt it this evening. And all it is is a warning to go Australian ballot instead of in person. Now, if anybody wanted to ever address having it in person, we would have to run it ourselves because town's gonna do theirs Australian ballot. So I guess I'll entertain a motion to warn the school budget vote via Australian ballot.
So moved.
So moved.
So is that correct?
I think I got that right.
I don't think so. I think that you, we're warning a meeting to see if, that's what we're doing. The town has to do the same thing. Their meeting is in December sometime and it's to see if the voters of the school district will change to voting by Australian ballot. I think that's what we're doing. Not, we can't make that decision ourselves.
Yes, so we are warning. Peter, I'm gonna forward this warning to you.
Okay.
If we warn this improperly, you'll have the right wording. But the town of Marlboro will call a special meeting on December 18th, 2021 to vote via Australian ballot. So I think that's the warning.
It should say to decide whether to vote.
Decide whether to vote.
And so we, and we're the school district, the Marlboro School District will vote, will meet on December 18th to see if the voters will vote to change the 2022 town meeting to Australian ballot.
You got all that, Peter?
Well, kinda.
Yeah. I'm surprised that Forrest didn't have that better in his. I mean, that really should be clearly elucidated in the, in the warning.
They're gonna warn a special board meeting December 18th to decide whether to vote via Australian ballot?
To get the town to decide whether to vote via Australian.
Wow, okay.
Or the voters of Marlboro.
It's a town meeting?
No, it's a school district meeting.
Oh.
We're warning a school district meeting to see if the voters of the school district will agree, will approve changing the 2022 town meeting to be by Australian ballot.
Got it.
And this is, this is clearly a COVID thing. It's probably not gonna happen again. But I think that next year, we have to have the same vote, but it has to undo the Australian ballot because Forrest said it sticks.
Yeah.
I don't think so. I think it, I think it doesn't stick.
It doesn't?
I think that we have to do this. That we'll go back to default unless we change this.
I don't think so.
That was Ms. Robinson's motion, right?
That was Dan's motion.
That was Dan's motion.
He just illuminated it.
He's illuminated it, okay.
Anyway, it doesn't matter if we have to, if we have to do this next year to revert or not, it does, it doesn't matter. We need to do this this year. And we need to do it today.
Yeah, and I was suggesting to him if it doesn't go off, that he should put it as an article on the actual Australian ballot to go back next year.
Right, right, yeah.
Which we could do. We should probably figure that out by January.
Yeah, exactly. That's a good idea, yeah.
Okay, the second went to Selena, I think. So any discussion on that? Were you both in? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 I think the ayes have it. Okay, thank you for that confusion. Benefits check in. So I just wanted to make sure that at the last meeting, we had agreed to change the wording in the staff manual for benefits to include, ensure bus drivers were getting that. I just wanted to follow up on that and make sure we, we did our work and everything is set. Dan and Selena?
I don't think you changed anything. I think you just.
We just clarified once. We didn't actually change.
We didn't clarify, we didn't have to make a wording change or anything?
No, it was just clarification.
All right. And I didn't inform the bus coordinators or the bus leaders yet, so should we do that?
Nobody can see the fact that I'm grimacing behind this mask because I can't remember whether we did, they weren't involved in that discussion.
I talked to Kayla after the meeting briefly, just to say that, you know, I think we, we settled it.
Yeah.
And that we directed Wayne to address it and compensate according to the other employees in the handbook as opposed to not treating bus drivers differently. So I think that we're set. Jeremy, do you agree or Kayla, can we, can we listen to the, to what the discussions are at home?
Well, I just think there was some confusion about the two different pieces and whether, when things were effective. I think that was the only question, but I, I think that she talked to Wayne about it.
Okay.
I haven't heard any frustration, but I think that that was the clarification, but.
Good.
Yeah, the further clarification was on personal days and sick days as well too. So we talked a lot about holidays last time, but we didn't bring up sick days and personal days and also retro, retroactivating. If that's a correct word, to the beginning of the school year. So I think it's just helpful to have this discussion right now that we're gonna retroactive it from the beginning of the year.
Retroactive, yeah, because that's on the handbook.
Yeah, it was effective at the beginning of the year.
And that, and that bus drivers receive all the benefits that are found in the handbook for the benefits of procedures. Yeah, but that's on.
I will make that motion just so that we, it's, that it's clear.
Yeah.
I don't think it needs to be made a motion.
Yeah. Because you should make any changes.
You're not making any changes. There's no motion needed.
Right, just so that anybody will be able to follow the paper trail.
Okay. So superintendent's report, Bill.
So going with the theme of the evening, I'm gonna be brief and efficient. We had a clinic yesterday run by Rescue Inc. for all five through 11-year-olds and 12 to 18-year-olds and any adults that wanted booster shots. And we had 70 students, I think 13 came from Marlboro. And we had 70 adults get boosters.
Yay!
Rescue Inc. did this because VDH is not able to do in small districts, so that was really cool. The three weeks from now on the eighth will be the second shot opportunity. A letter went out today from the WCSU board, just thanking all the staff for all their hard work the first three months of the year and letting them know the origin of the mental wellness day that this board talked about at your last meeting and all other boards talked about. Received some nice emails back. And test to stay for the WCSU will be able to be offered after the break. But we are starting to receive the shipments of the materials. And the three nurses that are employed by the WCSU have all agreed to kind of be a rapid response team to support that wherever it is necessary. With five through 11 being offered vaccinations, it'll more than likely be a very narrow group of people because it's only for unvaccinated asymptomatic students. We'll obviously learn a lot the moment that the first time happens, but I just really appreciate Sarah Sherrett, the Marlboro nurse, for being a part of the triumvirate of planning. And it's been a pleasure to work with her and the other two nurses. And we look forward to having that as a tool to offer to parents to be able to keep kids in school.
So Bill, how exactly does that test to stay work? Is, is that a mandatory thing for every unvaccinated kid or?
It is, so essentially, just imagine a classroom has an exposure in a school. And you will offer to all the unvaccinated students the ability to participate in test to stay. So we will contact them, let them know that they have been deemed a close contact. And if they would like to come to the school at the opening of school and get an antigen test. And if it's negative, they get to go to school. And if it's positive, they go home. And we do that for seven consecutive days. We also have onsite PCR tests that we'll be able to give to people that test positive. Just reduces the amount of time you have to stay in quarantine. Parents don't want to participate, they don't have to participate, they can do the regular quarantine. It's just simply allowing us to have a tool for parents to speed up the amount of time that they would be able to have their child in school rather than going to. And so essentially, a minimum of one nurse and my administrative assistant will be onsite. And we will have worked out locations in every school where it's off and away. So here, it'll probably be in the outback. Four or five people come in, get their test, takes 20 to 30 minutes. You wait, you either go to class a little late or you go home. And then you come back the next day and see what it looks like.
Great, that's, thanks for, for clearing that up, Bill. I appreciate that and thanks for organizing that.
I got lost at the beginning. It's, it's only if there's a positive case in the classroom or assist, a, a, like, there's a, like a symptom of some kind.
It's only if there's a positive case and you've been deemed a close contact.
Oh, okay, yes. Yeah, I wasn't reading all, I read a little bit about it in the ground notes, but I wasn't sure if it, like, would at all apply to, like, any unvaccinated child where we would.
Only unvaccinated that have been determined to be.
But only determined if they were close contact.
Exactly.
Oh.
And we have a really nice flow chart that the Vermont Department of Health just created. And that will go out after Thanksgiving, just kind of letting parents know how it all will work out. But yeah, all voluntary. It, it's a, it's just a tool that if parents want to avail themselves of it, they can.
Thank you, Bill. Anything else to share?
That's all I got.
Does anybody have questions for Bill? Before we get into Wayne's report, I'll just give you a quick legislative update. So it's related to the budget, you know? I don't know if anybody's been keeping track of the task force. I know, Bill, I don't know if you, do you share that stuff with all boards or just with the executive committee when you share the articles out that have come out? There's been a rash of them.
I just shared a few.
So I don't think we're gonna see relief this budget from anything in the legislature. So whatever we plan for has to be, we'll have the moratorium still on the excess spending threshold, that's a given. But we're not gonna see any kind of changes to, you know, pupil weighting, is my guess. But I am, I was asked to give testimony tomorrow, so I am gonna go to the task force and do that again. And Dan knows just as much as I, it's, could be fruitless, but it could have an impact, you never know. So I'm working on that with the lobbyists, with the coalition, as well as the executive director, Mark Schalberg. And that'll be at 2:30 tomorrow, so.
Thanks for doing that, Doug.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
And I think that, you know, they, essentially, the task force has lost their way. They are basically blowing up the, the weighting and trying to do everything grant, grant wise now. And just simply say, you know, you'll, you'll have to probably apply or not apply or just be counted based on your, you know, FRL rates and things like that. And then be given a sum, but it's gonna be on top of whatever we pay into the, to the pot. So I don't know, Lori probably understands how they're gonna work that in terms of like, they're gonna share it out and then recoup it through revenues? I have no idea.
I haven't heard that much about it yet.
But to me, like, I, I wanted to get from you, Lori, maybe after this, for the testimony tomorrow. And when you're free, you could send me how much the small schools, how much the small schools grant has lessened and why? Because I want to tell that to the task force, because that is a categorical aid model that basically is sort of a whimsy of, of the year. It changes all the time and the same thing could happen if they go this route. So that's gonna be sort of on my arguments, but. Is that possible to say, to say why this small schools grant lesson?
I can give you most of the information from the last couple of years, but previous to that, you would probably need to get it from Gail.
Okay.
I mean, I can look back through your audits. I think I have copies of audits. So I can get, I can get probably back to 18, maybe 17.
And do we know why it lessons? Is it just simply?
It's really a calculation and we haven't been getting the calculation sheet. I, I basically use the previous year and move it forward because the AOE doesn't get us that calculation sheet in time. And it's, you know, it's based on how many students in the building and there's some other calculators that go in or things that go into that to make up a number. So, you know, it, it really depends each year on who's in your building. That's the biggest driver, right? So if your count is up, it'll, you know, theoretically go up. So, or down, sorry, down. I said that backwards, yeah? So it's really. Yeah, it's been sort of one of these things that has never really been explained well by the AOE. And I think it's time, right? It's really time that they explain how they're coming up with that number and why it changes.
Yeah, and the other argument that I'm gonna make is they're going to make changes or propose categorical aid changes, but they are not gonna bait, they're not gonna hold that against what the report produces. So like, the report had weights in it, right? And if you feed in Marlboro's numbers into that weight system that the report established, you'd get a certain amount of money. But they're not gonna show that number against what they're currently proposing. They're just gonna show what they're proposing. And so the argument is like, well, where's the comparison and how do we, how do we get to see if yours, you're doing the right thing versus what the report suggests? So anyway.
I think, Doug, I, actually, I don't think it's gone down. I think it's still $116,000 or something like that. But more importantly is that it doesn't always come. I mean, there were years when Francie was the principal when we didn't get it for whatever reason. We didn't gain a lot of kids or lose a lot of kids. So I think that's almost more of a concern is just, as you pointed out a minute ago, it's at the, you know, it could change. You're getting it this year, you're not getting it next year. That's, that's more important than small fluctuations in the amount of it, really.
Right, and, and the fact that we build budgets not, or try to build budgets for a five-year plan. And things change, you lose resources within a year and then you have to have them back and all that stuff. So there's ups and downs that you have to avoid. Okay, figured out enough there. Principals report. Wayne?
Oh, yes.
You not that was on screen? Oh, you got it up.
Well, actually, I got the budget report. So why don't I bring my principals report? I was, you can tell my grant's not on budget.
Yeah, well, I wanna, I wanna say something before we start the budget.
Exactly.
That's important. But let's just do principals report and talk about the goods, warm fuzzies first.
Let me pull that up.
Everything going on in the school.
Why are you pulling that up? Did you see the report, the article by Emily, about Emily Kornizer and her work? And trying to like, they're basically not drawing out the weighting study and like trying to redo the entire funding, funding system?
That's what I, yeah, they just, they wanna scrap it because, yeah, they, they wanna go with income tax.
Right.
And that's gonna take years to develop and there's gonna be arguments on both sides.
Is anybody like locally talked to Emily about it? And I just feel like Emily is a pretty reasonable human being and is easy to talk to. I, I mean, I feel like she's biting off one and she can chew. I know she's part of a larger task force, but just wondering if. I mean, do you know her? I, I mean, I know her.
We, Dan and I have talked to her. We've had meetings with her about this. And, you know, there's a lot of pressure from districts that are going to be considered, look like all overweighted with tax increases. And it's, it's immense political pressure. But in my opinion, it's still no excuse enough to try and do the right thing and be vocal about it. So that's sort of where I'm at, but.
She was also a little late to the whole thing anyways, to supporting the waiting study in the first place of that, you know, so.
Yeah, but I mean, there's a lot, there is a big.
She spoke against it.
There is a big drive for the income tax argument. But it shouldn't, it shouldn't affect the fact that this is just a simple change to the weights that can help while we get there.
While you're doing that. No, 100%.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, this is like, let's have a blue ribbon study, you know, and a commission, and that's just kicking a can down the road.
It's kicking a can down the road.
And it is, it's, it's just avoiding political pressure. They should do this right now.
Yeah, I mean, why Becca and Emily.
You gotta hit that hard tomorrow.
Who are in the highest impoverished, you know, 80 FRL down in Brattleboro aren't at the front of this? I just can't, I can't fathom it and I don't understand it. And so I think that we, I think we do a good, pretty good job of putting pressure on them, I think in the coalition front and then I think just talking to them as well. But, you know, we're, they've heard from Dan and I so many times that they need to hear from other people. You know, we're just sort of the same people writing them, but.
So I never got a call back from coalition about that letter, but we can all follow up again.
Okay.
I think that there's, we're trying to figure out where things were at, but we can.
For the faith letter?
Yeah, like there was a, an idea that we have faith, interfaith leaders, coalition to write something about it, because it would just be a new angle. And I haven't, didn't hear back, but it was also right when things, we're trying to figure out what was gonna happen. And so I think maybe, maybe now I can follow it again.
Okay.
That's really easy to do when it has been effective with other issues.
Great, well, thanks for noting that, Selena. Uh, sorry, man. You're up.
Aye. Well, I'd like to first start with this because Patty, the preschool teacher, goes this every year and I think it's very entertaining. She asked the preschoolers how to cook the turkey. And this year, they were very creative. So the first step, just so you know, many of you, you've never cooked a turkey before, is to put the turkey in a pot of water.
Good to know.
Set the oven to 10 degrees or 1500. Your choice. Doesn't matter because it all come out to you. Sprinkle turkey with salt, pepper and salsa. Cook for 80 minutes, even if it's 10 degrees. Take out the turkey, let it cool down, then eat it all.
All right.
Yeah, it is, I love when she does that. So very entertaining. So, yeah, so I, I think I'll go over it a little bit more because we have a couple of folks that didn't get to see it beforehand. And again, this, you know, this, tonight's really looking at the budget. So I just focused on some of the, the highlights that's happening in the school this month. The first thing is, you know, we finished our, our assessments. And we just noticed that through what's their way, which is our spelling assessment, that, you know, we could, we can do some more targeted instruction for some of our students and, and actually in the whole, provide some, some spelling curriculum. And so it's really strong for K to two into three. There's a program called Foundations that works really well for that. And then after that, it falls apart a little bit. There's a lot of programs out there. They all do something really well, but not everything really great. And Jen, it gives like the WCSU coordinator is putting in a lot of work, actually a lot of copying and stapling work into getting WordSurge for fourth and fifth grade. And we're looking at getting it for three to eight. So that's, that's what we're looking into right now. So just wanted to let you know, it's one of those, you know, you get assessments back and you're like, hmm, okay, let's focus in this area a little bit. Next week, just so you know, we, we do have the Wellness Day off on Tuesday, which Brittle brought up and Rich, the board chair, sent out today, letting everyone know. But on Monday, we got pre-K to six, doing some professional development with keys to literacy. And Jesslyn and I, because I see myself more as the middle school teacher with science, will be at Leland and Gray participating in the project-based learning training. It's actually really nice to sit down with Jesslyn and get six hours to be able to talk education. We just, I just got off our first JEDI team meeting. Jeremy was there. And, and that'll be happening every single month. It was great, really great. Again, JEDI stands for Justice, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion. And this was our first meeting. Liz Hadi, who is a community member and family member, will be filling in long term for Carol Martin as she is out for a week, and that isn't a preschool.
For a month.
For a month, yeah, most likely till the end of the calendar year. And then Jeanne Frost, who really helped us out with serving lunches and filling in and also getting laughter kicked off by taking attendance with kids and getting them their snacks. She, her did it, her last day was today. And, but the good news is that she's gonna stay on as a substitute. So a couple of times that she was able to do some cameos in the class. She loved it to death, so she's, wants to come back. We had our second COVID case, as many of you know, on November 11th in our preschool classroom. Our local education council, which we have a member. Our local education council, which we have a member and Robin, had our meeting on November fourth. We were able to see the agenda in the notes below. And then our second laughter session, really high numbers, again, forty-nine, forty-five, fifty, thirty-two. And the piece that you can't see there, but which is really important, is we're again having students, grades five through eight, participate at a, at a really high level. Not only in band, but art, in, in field, floor hockey and in basketball as well too. So, so we're having the older kids staying after school, which is something that we've, we've had a challenge with in the past, but we're seeing that now. And then also Liz is going to be starting the newspaper again. Remember the newspaper that we had? So Liz will be starting that again and going to the end of the year with that. So that again is older kids staying after school, participating in this great programming. Financial efficiencies, we cleaned out the sprawl crawl space under the outback. We pretty much finished it today. We got the last couple of windows that were under there. You may have noticed, we got a fifteen-hour dumpster. We don't know how we do it every time, but we fill it right up. And then we always wish we got a bigger one. And mobile classroom is coming. The excavator was here today. He was marking out the area where it's going to go.
And you got like a road.
Yep, we're going to have a road to it.
That's awesome.
And you brought some equipment here. Yeah, Dan.
So I actually got a call from a student this afternoon concerned about that apple tree. That the student said that that tree was probably going to have to get cut.
Yeah.
And I would like to, to offer to intercede on behalf of the tree. If there's any way we could squeak the, the mobile classroom by without cutting it.
Well, two things. The first is it would be really difficult. The second thing is that tree is holding, I don't even know how it's standing. It really, I would say that maybe seventy, seventy-five percent of the trunk itself is missing. It is completely hollow in there. And what we're thinking is that because it had such a big blow up this year, that it is pretty much near the end of its life.
I will say just anecdotally, it's sort of felt like that for the last seventy years since I first saw it there, so.
I know.
I know another hollow apple tree that's doing pretty well too.
Yeah, so whatever the case, let me talk with the people who are involved if it's okay. And we'll see if, and if it comes down next year, at least it wouldn't have just been, you know, just in the, you know, that in the progress, wouldn't have knocked it down, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess my first thought went to that, you know, I'd hate for it to fall on somebody's car in their parking.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, no, check it out.
Okay. That's good. Let me know whenever they're going to be back again and I'll just meet with them and we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, I think it, I think it ought to be tomorrow, but yeah, I'll.
Okay. That's a good, good thing.
So as I said, mobile classroom's coming. We cleaned up a little bit of the lower lot, were able to do that today. We're not going to move the shed, which is great. It's going to stay where it is. And I just don't have any updates from last, the last board meeting on the exhaust system or the art room. And it's simply just a matter of somebody coming out here. We all know everyone's really, really busy right now. But they, we have people that are, you know, wanting to look at the work and give us that statement.
Actually, can I ask another question then?
Yes.
Wayne, so if the shed that's there now is not going to move, that pushes the classroom farther out into the playfield there. Is that, is, are we okay with that? Is that the way it's going to, whatever's going on there?
I, I wish we weren't losing any of it.
Yeah, yeah.
When we met with the excavator and we looked at how we could possibly pull the, the trailer in and turn it and then place it where it needs to go, he, he didn't feel like we could get it much closer than what we can do right now. The other piece was that, say for example, this is the field, right? Lengthwise, here's the outback. We got our little shed here. We originally going to put it longwise here. And what we, what we realized first was that we actually don't have enough space because we have our, our septic and stuff here. But if this is the edge of what the building would be longwise, we're essentially pretty much keeping the edge in the same exact.
Right, got it.
Okay? So he, that's when he said, you know, you're, you know, like you're going to lose some here, but you're not really losing much this way.
Right, gotcha.
And he's going to, the excavator is going to try to get it as far as he possibly can. I mean, you're talking six feet today. He's like, I think I might be able to stick six, four hundred feet out. So we're doing, we're doing the best we can at that.
Any other questions for Wayne? Go to June, then Jeremy?
Yeah. Well, I was gonna make a comment and have a question. And so the comment is, I think that, you know, we've been talking about this for months in different ways, but just to categorize it is like the mental health of the students being so primary. And I think the laughter participation is so great because it's so much like this team environment. And we kind of do that with the curriculum anyway here, more than a lot of schools. But turns out that's like really important, especially for kids who didn't have that, like. So that's, I think, really, and I know it's going to come up in the budget, but I think that's a really a demonstration of like how you need to go the extra mile to take care of kids' mental health right now. And so my, that's my comment. And then my question is, how is the teachers' mental health? And we also talk about how to take, I think we talk about that a lot in these board meetings. And I just thought an update would be nice tonight too.
I, uh, so, so it is, it is, it's, it's tough. It really is tough. I think, I, I think that some folks are getting really tired of masks. Like all of a sudden, out of the blue, they're like, I am tired of wearing a mask. It's, and they're like, I know it's small, I know it's small, but I'm really sick and tired of it. The, the idea that we've changed so much in the last couple of years through teachers. Pam Mel is our longest teacher who's been here for six years. We've changed programming, so we've tried things in math. Now we have a brand new middle school program. So we're not being able to rely on things that we did maybe, you know, ten years ago. Many of our staff weren't even teachers then. So there's, there's that extra piece, plus the fact that we, we do need to respond and react quickly, constantly. And, and, and that's challenging too. I'll give you an example, just yesterday I was at the admin team. I got a text saying that this board upstairs officially stopped working right in the middle of class. My science class, which was covered, was going to do a video. So now everyone's scrambling. And, and it's, it's not that it's a big deal, but if there wasn't so many other challenges, we would have been able to use the other board at this point. So it's just these compound things that happen. Folks are feeling tired. I'm really glad that we have a wellness day this week. I'm really glad that we have a break next week. I'm also glad that we have three weeks and then we get another break. Because I, I feel like that's just equally important. We, you know, and we, you know, we did talk about it on Friday. So, I mean, on Monday's meeting. That's all we talked about. And, and I also, you know, appreciate that every single Monday meeting that we have short or being provided by the community, you know, scones and bread and food-free options and y'all lunch. I just want to say today, we had a fall harvest lunch today, which was something that I felt we all, actually the kids were the ones that felt that that was really important through L E C. Made us feel like, yeah, let's, let's, let's do this. We made it happen. So it's, it's a lot of mixed feelings and everyone's just in place, they're in place with, with the time and we're tired. You know, but, but that, that, that goes with everybody, you know? I, I just, I would just add too that there's a part of me and Sarah, Sherrod, the nurse and I, sometimes sitting there and be like, is anybody else paying attention here? Like Vermont is in really real trouble here. Like we're the, one of the few states that is seeing skyrocketing numbers. And it's, it's sort of like, yeah, that's okay, but we're not supposed to think about that. We're just supposed to keep on going on. And it feels like there's just not much support, like, oh, we have, you know, kids can get vaccinated. No, that's great. Five to eleven. But at the same exact time, it does feel like this wheat that you're carrying, like six hundred cases today in Vermont, five hundred and fifty cases. This is, this was unheard of. And it's not being seen in the other states as well too. So I, so I, I think that like, we don't want to talk about it so much, but we also, it's like somebody likes responsible acknowledging the fact that we're, we're in a crisis right now. So, so I don't, I don't, I don't mean to keep on going on, but, but that's really what we're feeling. I mean, we're feeling it, we're doing it. And, and we also realize and really appreciate that we're here at Marlboro School. I think, I think we've come together really, really strong as a community, fulfilling the support. We appreciate all of you. And, and so we, we also can acknowledge that as well too, that we're, we're going to do a pandemic anywhere, this would be the best spot to do it, so. So thanks for asking that. And I hesitated a little bit just because I just wanted to make sure I captured it.
Well, I'll just say super quick, and I know Jeremy wants to say something, but just really quickly. But, you know, my vantage point is interesting now because my kids are at the high school. And so, but they had those last, like Sam's whole last year and a half and Tess's had last half year, you know, for this craziness. And there was a lot of teacher turnover while they were here and all of these things that you're saying. And, you know, we just had conferences for those kids and I've observed it's a regular, a rigorous curriculum down there, you know? Whether it's Tess's English or, and it's kind of, you know, self-directed, it's very new, it's very modern, you know? Or it's accelerated algebra, which is like whipping by. And they're doing great. And when I talk to their teachers, they're like, whoa, these are standout kids. And they're describing things that Marlboro does well. Like, you know, so, you know, blew them away and it was by far, you know, blah, blah. And it really is because of the school. And so there's a, there is a thread, you know, that continues. And so that's to be, both schools and the connection are to be applauded because they're both like doing incredible things during the pandemic and now in this rollout, trying to support children. So we want to talk about all the policies and the budget, but we also want to talk about what makes the lives better for the people who are carrying out the educating here. So anyway, thank you for sharing all that. There might not be anything that for us to necessarily do and you'll tell us, but it's good to have that real assessment.
Jeremy, I'll let you ask, but I just want to follow up on what Wayne said real quick about the support. I know that two meetings ago, I think it was our first meeting of the year, we talked about, we sent that letter out to the community. But it's true. I think the state has abdicated in making sure. We, we knew going into this year, we said, this is going to be a harder year than last year because people are tired and we still have the same problems. But I just wonder, I'm asking Wayne, I guess, is, do you feel like that helped when we pushed that out there? And did you get responses? And are you getting the volunteers and any understanding from people? Because it felt like at the beginning of the year, there was, there wasn't really that understanding of what everybody was still going through. And is, has it helped, do you think, at all, or?
I think it's helped. I, I definitely feel a lot of support working in this community. I think, I think our teachers still feel the pressure of just being a teacher and wanting to do the best that they can. And we have, we have teachers that take a lot of pride in what they do. They're very passionate about what they do. And they will push themselves to be better. I, I would just piggyback on that too, like in September, we, we still didn't grasp what we were walking into. And I think now that we're in it, it's mid-November, we're on a, you know, on a break next week. I think people get more about what our life is like. And honestly, the numbers are doubled to triple than what we dealt with in September too. So, so I think, I think that.
I think we were wiser. We were on day thirteen and everybody was spent. So I think we were. We were wiser in September than most, but I don't know. I'm sorry, because I just, you know, it's like we had that meeting. I just feel like there's, you can ask for things and we can do our best to give it to you, but it's really a state obligation. And they're not meeting that obligation.
No.
And I'm sorry for that because you, you deserve better.
Well, I think, I think our, I think our state deserves better, honestly. You know, I, I think that's where it comes from. And we just happen to be the hub by which most people come to every single day from their households, the children. So we, we are the, we are the community in many ways. And it's just, there's, again, it just, it feels like a, a lack of support. Either from the test to stay, which, you know, I want to commend the nurses and Bill for pulling that to big out because that's been every single week, meetings on Wednesday, figuring out how to do this. So like, or whatever day it was, it's every week. So it's like, so Sarah could be with kids, the nurse, she could be doing exactly, but no, she's on a Zoom meeting, being able to figure out how we can access another tool so we can have students here more.
And you're like inventing it, like it's not like, there's a playbook.
Yeah.
So. Well, yeah, oh, it's been done in two other states, so here you go. It can be done. You know, it's, it's, and I, you know, and I don't want to, everybody I feel like is doing their best. And at the same exact time, I'm just hoping that those folks out there aren't just throwing things out because it's a good idea. But, but hopefully they, they just are spending at least five to 10 minutes thinking about what, what implications this will happen. What will happen when I, when I send stuff? And that's not, we don't, we're not feeling that. We're not feeling that. And that, that's the challenging part.
Jeremy?
Yes. I'll just follow up on her and then just a very brief, another issue. The first thing is that, yeah, it's like our society is in some, like is post-pandemic. And then there's these corners where that seems insane, but economic, certain things are, are doing that. And so I think that people that lead institutions where you're responsible for people or the whole town, as in the case of the school, it's like they're, it's just like people are living in different realities. So of course masks are annoying now because a bunch of people like, like, it didn't annoy us as much when we believed that they were saving lives by wearing them. And now it's just all very confusing. And politicization on the right and the left is just ridiculous. You know, as a ultra-lefty, some of the left stuff is just ridiculous too. And so it's, it's just like, I see that you and the teachers are all having to hold this stuff. So when there's a, when there's, when there's a way to share that burden, I would just love more, more requests. And there was something that we talked about a couple of meetings ago and I was going to follow up and I didn't. I think it's already happening, some hospitality stuff for the teachers. It's always, I probably got the idea from a few years ago, but like any more like that, if there's anything you say, oh, this is just humanizing. It's not, we can't solve these problems. This is humanizing for the faculty that supports them. I mean, just please, like, it's really so worth, or, you know, that thing that you need to get cleaned out. I wasn't joking when I said, if you should be doing something else, you should have called me, like, just, just please let us know. Cause that's the thing that's just like, I don't know how you do it for a full, you know, for forty-plus hours a week. So thank you. The other thing that's just completely separate is just that because we are now in a holding pattern for, for development of a different campus or moving to a different campus, I just wanted to ask if you, if you might begin to develop a plan for a temporary play structure, whether it's a temporary play structure or it is a good play structure that could then be moved. And I'll just leave it at that. I think that it's needed and I guess with the snow coming, we probably don't have to be too urgent about it. And if there's work that needs to be shared on that, I'm happy to assist or, or help with that in any way. So that's it.
Just on that front, the play structure and then is that, do you know those crime dome structures?
The seven days kind?
Yeah.
The, the geodesic domes. We do have one coming November twenty-ninth. And we plan to put it, if it does fit.
That's just your childhood.
Yeah. We plan to put it between the, I talked with Pam.
Oh, cool.
And, and she felt like there's, when they have their little mini breaks, they go out to that area. So we are adding that.
Oh, cool.
And we actually have enough wood chips to, to do everything else. So that's at least a small piece of, of just being able to add some, some play structures to our, to our area. And I want to say that we can thank Marlboro School Association for funding that project.
I was going to say, association is basically helping with the playground, right?
They're, they're paying for it, the playground, yeah. So yeah, just, just add a little bit to that.
I just wanted to, you know, you guys have been doing this wonderful Monday staff meeting snacks. And I picked up everyone eats Yalla sandwiches for the whole staff a couple of weeks ago. But is there anything for this week, since it seems like staff needs something right now? That the board or the Marlboro School Association or that we could just gift them? It's Monday, you made it, here's something.
I do.
I don't know if there's money. I don't know which organization has money or once possible.
Maybe you and I can think of something nice to bring Monday.
Maybe you and I can think of something nice to bring Monday to the staff, because staff will be here this coming Monday?
It'll be outside.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
If you give it to me, I'm happy to bring it. I mean, we're gonna be at three different schools, so.
Rob, just a heads up, I don't know if you know, but they did get, we did grant them, the whole WCSU has the day off on Tuesday. So that day they're not here, so it really is just the Monday. So that was the gift from the boards, I think. But yeah, I think food or anything like that would be really great, treats.
And then the other question I had is Sarah is working, you know, anytime my kids are sick or have an exposure, I email her at nine o'clock at night and she emails me back ten minutes later.
She's amazing.
And she's doing that with every single family in this school, seven days a week.
Weekends, yeah.
I thought it was special.
So is Sarah getting paid enough and is Sarah getting paid enough?
You're right, Sarah is amazing. I want to, I want to add on to that, that there was a, um, there was a local, um, situation with COVID and, and a performance and Sarah stepped up for the community, not even related to our school, on a weekend. And she put in the time needed because of her knowledge around, around this. She helped out an organization outside of here that had some of our students at it. So not only is she emailing nine o'clock at night, texting, so on and so forth, she's also working through the weekend. She's, she's quite, she's quite amazing. I don't, again, I, I don't know how other schools are not doing without a Sarah because she's, she's really rocking it. So thanks for pointing that out because she's not going to sleep.
And I don't know if there's a way to give her a bonus or some kind of recognition, at least from the board.
Yeah, that's good consideration. I think we can consider that. I do think that it's amazing how, you know, last year, when we tried to open our hours up and expand it, there was pushback for the nurse. And so now that we are seeing how amazing she is, I'm glad that, that other people are as well. So I think that, yeah, I think that we try to treat all staff to as many bonuses as we can at this time. You know, last year was really hard. You know, we didn't know where the budget was going to go and, you know, we held off increases, but then extended that out through bonuses. So it was like, it was a tricky time, but I think that's something we should talk about. Anybody have any thoughts?
Just to, uh, that throughout the last year, uh, we have, that Wayne's leadership always made sure that, you know, she's in the right category, she considered as, you know, like, it made sure that she's not falling behind where other things are union negotiated or separate. And so pretty sure that Wayne's usually making the same suggestions as you. He didn't really say a recuse of that, but he's been talking about her and appreciation and symbols of appreciation from the start of the pandemic for her.
You know, not to throw cold water on this great discussion, but, um, we're gonna see later that during the current year, we're operating at a substantial deficit. So, you know, I don't, we don't anticipate, we anticipate being well out of money before the year is over. I just want to throw that out there.
I also want to reiterate what we did last meeting, which was, people don't want money, they want time, they want rest and they want to recoup. And I don't know how you tell somebody like Sarah to take a break. That's the other question. You know, that's, that's a character thing, that's not, you know, and Wayne, maybe you can talk to her.
Maybe say Tuesday, we, if anybody gets anything from Sarah on Tuesday, then we're taking all of her computers away from her for the next three days or something like that.
Like mandatory shutdown. You have to recoup yourself too.
You know, Sarah's a real professional and, um, I think she feels like this is what she needs to do now. And, uh, we have open, open communication and if she comes to me for anything, I'll, I'll be there to listen and help support her, for sure.
Any other questions for Wayne on this? All right, we will hit them with the budget, uh, but I want to just do a little preamble. Jeremy, this is your first rodeo.
I'm not sure we finished the principal's report, didn't I see window shares in a couple of, sorry Wayne, but-
That was the LEC minutes at the end.
Was it? I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry.
Did you not read it beforehand?
No, you can-
This is the new, come on, we started this in September, you gotta read it, tell it question.
Do your homework, Dan.
I can't see through your head, Doug, it's basically, it's a clue from here, so. Okay, so.
All right, so a little preamble, so this is Jeremy's first rodeo. It's not just for Jeremy, I'm sharing it for everybody, this is a reminder. Jude, this is your second rodeo. But just as a reminder, we're having this meeting, which is the, basically the ask meeting or the, this is the lay of the land meeting in December. Hopefully, this meeting in December eighth, we'll have a number that we can put in and we'll see what the state has given us and how that impacts the budget. Because right now it's just guesswork and we know monetarily what we're gonna need. We don't know how that impacts our, you know, overall, you know, tax rate or anything like that. So I think that when Wayne and I met earlier this week, I went through the presentation with him and I, you know, was bowled over by the need. We agreed last time that we're planning for a COVID year again, even though we might not be in COVID next year, but we have to plan for it. So I think that tonight, when we look at the budget and then Wayne does his presentation, I think that we should just keep ourselves to questions, thoughts, comments, but not solutions yet. Only because we don't know where we're gonna land. And we'll have a better lay of the land December eighth. We will also have December sixteenth. And then, if you remember last year, we got our budget done in December and everybody was getting their budgets done early. And that was a mistake. And I think if you guys are willing to go the distance, I think we hold till as late as we can in January to see what the state gives us and we can maybe make some final decisions if we get numbers later. But they were hoping that everybody would get their budgets in. And then when they did that, they lowered the threshold. So if we can toe the line to January, and I know that means more meetings for us, but I think it's worth it. And if you want to do it on Zoom, because it's easier, we could do it on Zoom. But I just think that we have a lot of, we got a big, big mark coming at us this year. And we need to think about that because we're making expenditures I think that we might not even use because of COVID. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Wayne. I'm gonna keep us to, I guess, an hour and fifteen. Right, I'll keep us to an hour. But I'll call it a day. I'm gonna let Lori go when she's done with her questions, because it's late for her. But we do have an executive session after this, so.
So just to be clear, so the, Laura, you sent today also your detailed budget. Is that, if that's different, is that the one we're gonna see here or is, Wayne, this is your sort of roadmap budget? Is that correct? And are we not gonna look at the, at the detailed one then tonight?
What I sent for you today was a year-to-date for this current year. What Wayne is going to present on is for the fiscal year twenty-three budget. But they play together, right? So.
And is that the same one that you sent yesterday?
Yes.
Okay.
The detail.
Okay.
Which I think Wayne has copied some.
This is also the stamina building meeting. We're just gonna start building that stamina so we can get into the four hour meeting at the center. Okay. Also, we're recording this for VCTV, so we're gonna share this out with the town afterwards. And then I think we should talk about whether we want to keep doing that or have a Zoom meeting when we really start digging in and then give people a little bit more chance from the community to come in and start talking to us. So we should consider that. Okay, take it away, Wayne.
Yeah, and this is very much a partnership between Lori and I as we put this budget together. And I think, I don't know how far you've gone into this budget presentation, but, um, there's a lot to think about. So this is our trip this past fall. We have some seventh and eighth grade students here and this was when we were hiking up Mount Mansfield. So it was a beautiful day and it just so turned out that it was, it was overcast and we got to the top of it right up. So can't ask for anything more. So last time when we met, we, we came up with, with some goals that I looked at over the notes and looked, looked over. And really was, you know, again, like Doug just said, planning for another pandemic, leasing a second bus, looking to fund a hundred percent of the after-school programming. Right now we, we get about forty percent through grants. Add a middle school science teacher, add, add funding for an architect, we haven't done that yet, but, but to put that in the budget with the renovation coming. Funding of the mobile classroom. And then, and then we also discussed, you know, looking to try to create a tax rate around that one eighty, one ninety mark. We left it going there, but you, I, I'll say that you're, you're sort of all over the place as well too. So, but that's what we're looking at. So just, just comparing a number of students, so next year's projected is a hundred and one again, so it'll just be right over that hundred. And I apologize, Doug, I did not have time to put in the actuals right now.
That's okay, we can clarify that later.
Okay. The FY twenty-two teachers are there, that's actually what we budgeted for. It's not what we have right now, but that's what we budgeted for and what we're looking at this year.
So just to clarify, I asked Wayne to put a second column, that was like the budget and what we put in, but then what we actually needed and what's in the building now. Because like Matt, Matt's here, but he's actually here. He's not, you know, he's not there, he's not, he's in third, fourth still. So we had to move things around because of COVID and other things, but, um, so maybe next time we could look at that or you can add it after this and share it out with me.
And, and also that this assistant here, we decided to pay with our surplus. And this assistant here is paid with S R two funds, so COVID relief grant funds. So that's why they're not in the budget from last year, but we, before we even ended the budget season, we knew that we were going to be adding those two assistants.
And they're in the building now.
And they're in the building now, correct. So we, we knew we were gonna add them, just not put in the budget, we're gonna pay out a different way and they are in the building.
So it's not a change?
It's not really a change, no.
Well, yeah, and so like this, this is Matt, but he's actually here, so he's still continuing here. So like, this isn't really a change, but it is here, so.
Yeah, so really what we're looking at is taking me out in the planning of a pandemic here, taking me out of teaching science and adding a middle school science teacher.
And you don't anticipate that any of that will be covered by S R funds next year? So those are included in, in our budget proposal to be paid through local taxes and state revenue.
I, well, I know we won't, we can't rely on a surplus again, I do know that. Regarding S R three, right?
Our S R, yes.
Okay. We will be getting some money. Doing, I don't, we, we don't really know how much it's going to be and we also know that it's gonna be less, right? Is that pretty clear?
It'll be less than the other two grants that came through, it'll be probably in the fifty-eight thousand dollar range. However, you, you wouldn't want to put, you know, a science teacher in that because of the funding cliff that'll happen the year after. And Wayne and I have talked about something that's not in the budget that might need to go into that, so. Still in flux.
I realize, after I asked the question, I realized I'm doing exactly what Doug said we shouldn't do, which is, we're not where the money's gonna come from. This is what we're talking about.
Just let it wash over you then, would you? Just let this wash over you.
Let her go, yeah.
We're gonna have plenty of three, three meetings to talk about.
I, uh, yeah, and I appreciate that too, because I stared at this, the line item budget for a really long time to try to make sense of this budget because it took a long time for me to make sense of this budget.
Me too.
Yeah, so again, we're looking at, uh, next year, uh, we're essentially keeping our specials the same. Health, there is health the same as well too. And then specialized instruction, we are increasing a prepaid classroom, special education para. What I did point out is laughter is in blue, so the, it's not point six and point one. Is, it is point one of point six. Okay? So points, point one of the point six is for laughter, for band, for F, for P E and for library. Does that make sense? Okay. So I just, I want to say it's an add, it's actually part of it. And that's what we're really doing this year as well too. So that's, that is the, that is what we wrote essentially into the grant and that's what we're doing. And we're seeing the programming that, that we've been able to get this year.
If I have a question about specials, is this the time to bring it up?
I think, let's let him finish and then we'll go all the way around, go, say, go back to that slide, I don't want to talk about this. So make your notes and we'll, we'll all take questions from that.
You know, I just added this last time just to, to talk about specials classes and we talked about it in the LEC and we plan to do a one-pager to, to, to really explain, you know, what, where time is allotted. And, and we talked about this last time, that if we add more than one special, it's gotta, it's gotta come out of somewhere, somewhere else. And that was one of the things that made us change last year. Because two years ago, particularly in primary, we had eight specials. And so that was eating into whatever, whatever it might be. It wasn't recess and lunch, it wasn't morning meeting, those are really important and also, you know, a necessity, transition time. So it was really, you know, taking away minutes from either math, E L I, science or social studies. And many times at the earlier grades, it was, it was science. So that's, I just wanted to include that again too, just to give that picture as well. And then get, so getting back to our goals before we start seeing numbers, again, I, we have this in the budget. That's really all we have in there, honestly. It's not, it's not that we're, when you see the number, you're like, how can we go from this? This does not look like much to what we're going to, what I'm gonna present to you next. Which is, you know, we are looking at a half, half million dollar increase. It's actually up to five hundred, ten thousand dollars right now. It's a seventeen percent increase. And so I wanted to go through and just highlight some of the spots that, that were close to twenty thousand dollars. And there's a lot of them. And, and you know, there's a lot of them in the mid-teens, I stopped at eighteen thousand dollars. But, but this is what we're looking at, you know, for increases. And you would say like, well, how can this add up to a half million dollars? But when you add up all the many other pieces, cost of living going up five point nine percent, you know, we, we end up seeing this increase. I think, I think this was something I was not anticipating when I walked into this budget. I knew about this.
Well, I don't know what you were just pointing to.
Oh, sorry, there's this-
High school tuition.
High school tuition.
It's about a quarter of an increase, if not more.
Yeah. And then I think the piece of not in the budget, but, but now is, as we talked about at the beginning, where we have two assistants. We also reduced the tax rate using fourteen thousand dollars last year, so that's something that we have to compensate to bring into this year as well. It's a small piece, but that fourteen thousand is a double, because you have to make it up for it. Then you lose it one year and then you have to make up for it another next year. And it was the right thing to do at that time. It's, it's not, it's, you know, this is where we were, we had a large surplus. So that's, that's where we went. And so when you look at the detailed budget of line by line by line, you'll notice that nothing really sticks out other than high school tuition. And honestly, having a higher high school tuition means that we have more kids in our community. So that's not necessarily a bad thing. And the good piece is that does, could potentially come with some funding through, um, ADM, which is the number of students we have in our, our school. That's one of the pieces of the formula for the tax rate. So we have that. Just looking at like each of the large departments, salaries, as you can see, was by far the biggest increase. But, but this was, again, the budgeted, it wasn't actual, because we didn't put the two assistants in there. So that would be as significant, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be quite as big of a gap. But then you look at employees' benefits, they actually went down a little bit. You know, purchasing of technology, that went up, but that's part of another line from previous years. Property, again, we've got a mobile classroom, other services, that's where that tuition piece comes in. And, you know, and then, you know, supplies, probably, you know, they're, they're flat, you know, they're essentially flat. So when you even look at this, you're like, where is that, where's that half million dollars? That's what it really comes down to. And then at the end, I just, like, I just wanted to make sure that we keep up with the, the verbiage, the budget terminology and I'll have this on our presentation at all times so we know what, um, you know, what, what all these, what all these things mean. So, so I think that was the overview. Again, I've, I've spent a fair amount of time looking at it, wondering why. And knowing that this is, this, this is not a budget. This is a budget that supports our programming. That's what it is. And it's not something that we're trying to start new or, or that we've been hit with other than- other than tuition, hit with a large expense somewhere. This is really a budget that values the programming that we have here at the school, that we are actually supporting now. So it's not like we're adding a bunch of, a bunch of new pieces to this school and this community. So I will, I guess I'll leave it right here. And just, I think it would be great to just open it up, like what Doug was saying, questions, comments and.
I'll have all your questions, obviously, and comments, but I want to give it to Lori if she wants to share anything.
Well, I just wanted to point out, or to follow up on what Wayne was saying about the salaries too, because if you remember in twenty, because this is budget to budget, right? And that's really important to keep in mind, that it's budget to budget. And if you remember, we were, you were in a negotiation year last year, right? So all of the salaries were budgeted at their current for fiscal year twenty-one, right? So that's why you're seeing such a large increase. Because now the negotiated agreement is in place and we've increased, you know, the step. You're still in a negotiation year again, so there's still that coming as well.
So that five hundred thousand we're looking at is sort of an apples and oranges, because we're looking at the budget, but that five hundred thousand is the actual, with all the things that we're not seeing included here, the things we had to add, the things we had to, the unanticipated expenditures, all that stuff.
Yeah, it's almost as though you need to look at this particular budget year as a fiscal year twenty-three to fiscal year twenty-two actual, instead of that twenty-two budget line.
So, okay, so just a reminder, questions, example, could be why are there so many assistants? Not how do we, do we need so many, like, not solutions. We just want to figure out, like, let's figure it out, let's pick apart the budget, understand it. And then next two meetings, we can dig into like, okay, let's really focus on these areas. So Jude, I think I saw your hand up first.
Yeah, so I, just in that vein and around thoughts, you know, when you have up there, the goal is planning a pandemic year. And, you know, as Laurie pointed out, boy was it different than what we budgeted. And it's almost like, I think, like we're going to close the gap a lot. There didn't seem to be really any big expenditures, except staff, which should be the biggest thing. And I just feel like, in your principal's report, you really talked about people struggling. And so in some ways, I, I'm surprised there aren't more staff, because if we're planning for a pandemic year, as I said, like after school programming, mental health stuff for the kids, that's all really important, social opportunities, development. But then for the teachers, are we going to be walking into another year where they're like, yeah, I burned out, you know, last year? If you're not going to get me anything more than one assistant. We just don't know where we're going to be. We don't know if people are going to apply for jobs, we don't know if we're going to have subs. I mean, when we say plan for a pandemic year, I just want to make sure we actually are doing that, so that we don't then get into a situation where it's like, wow, we really under budgeted. And then we're looking at this kind of thing. Because I think we learned a lot. So now, that's a big number, so I'm just laying this out here, not to settle anything or anything, you know, but I think the clarification of the actual budget is a little more grounding about what we're talking about. And I just would hate to kind of undercut the staff. Even though that's like, how many assistants? I don't know, this is a year where it's.
That was an example question.
I know, I know, I know.
I have to pick something that was a lot.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Sorry, I shouldn't have even echoed that, because I know, I know what you mean.
Even that though Jude, this is a response.
I'm done, yeah.
We have a philosophy over how we treat our assistants and who we hire, they get benefits. I don't know, do we want to think about assistants without that? That's a philosophy, but that's something to think about. Anyway, Robin had a question about specials.
Yeah, I had brought this up at the L E C and Wayne said I should bring it to the board, which is just, I would really love to see us prioritizing foreign languages and really feel the loss of it not happening at all this year, but would love to see two days a week of Spanish for fifth through eighth grade.
I got a question, just related to Spanish. I thought Gail was coming back and we were putting it back to what the level it was at prior. I thought this was just a year hypothetical. So let's talk about that.
Sure, I put her, currently right now, she's, she is contracted for one day of Spanish a week. If we add another day, I can see it working very well at the upper grades, because we have a block every single day that's a supported study block. So I can see that happening very easily. At the lower grades, that would mean that if we had two days of Spanish, that we would be eating into, eating into the math, E L I and social studies and science type. So I think, you know, Rob bringing, Robin bringing up the five through eight is, is something that we can definitely look at. And I'm happy to move forward with investigating that for the next board meeting.
That was something I was going to bring up as well. Other parents have asked about the Spanish program, not just Robin, but, so I'm glad that that could be consideration. And I think the five through eight is a great solution.
Yeah. So I want to say, kind of conceptually, I believe that the school board is better to come out of December with a higher budget rather than a lower budget. Because the state then looks at all the proposed budgets, amasses them all together and, and thinks that's what people are actually thinking they're going to spend. So it's a long-winded way of saying, we should add stuff in and be prepared to whack it out if we absolutely don't feel that we can, rather than not come forward with it in the ask, which is kind of what you were saying before. So is that, do you agree with me Lori, that the state is going to look at all the budgets that they see coming their way and they're going to count up all that money? And then they're going to say, that's how much it looks like we need to get for next year? And if we cut our budget then after that, they will already have allocated the funds based on our earlier budgets.
So currently I have sitting in my email that something that has to go to the state are projections of year over year ed spending. So they are collecting that data right now. And you're right, it'll, it'll impact yield, it'll impact ed spending that'll come down, so. Yeah, that's, it's happening now.
So I guess my point is if we're looking at another part of a day for, for Spanish or whatever, acknowledge that it, that none of this may come to fruition, but it's the ask. This is what we would dream of for our kids and let the state see those figures.
I think that is sort of the, sort of the game that we're trying to play this year, right? We learned our lesson.
Yeah, yeah.
And we know that they're playing their game as well, which is, let's just wait until the last minute and then we'll change the yield and then everybody goes down. Because last year, for those that don't remember, we planned a dollar seventy-three tax rate. And in June, we got a dollar sixty-three. So that's ten cents on the tax rate that we could have been spending to support the teachers and the students during a pandemic. And that kind of, for lack of a better term, pisses me off. So I feel like we should push it to the, to the limit of the end in January and just see if we get there. So Lori, you got some lessons?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, you wouldn't, we budgeted that thirteen, fourteen thousand of surplus to use and that wouldn't have had to happen, right? Because of the ten cents when they dropped the penalty. But to dance, comment before you're, when the state is collecting this data, they are also, they're also changing the yield based on what the cumulative percentage is, right? So actually, what happened last year is that the budgets came in lower than anticipated. So that's why they dropped the yield, which dropped the tax rate. So may want to be careful about loading up the budget and, and showing that to the, the public and then having to cut it. I mean, you're solidly over two dollars right now, solidly. So I'm just putting that out there.
See, the problem I feel when I looked at this is that I don't see anything that's whackable. You know, like you're saying, we could just, you know, we could add something, but we're well over two dollars, as Lori said. So in my mind, everything on there is sort of a necessity. So how do we, how do we handle this, other than to keep fighting against what's going on in the state of the inequity issue? But that's the only thing that's going to change it, in my opinion.
But we, we also have transitioned somewhat into worrying about where the money's going to come from and I apologize for that, rather than just saying, this is what we would like to do. And if, if we're hearing a lot of push for adding Spanish as a, as a, as a extra, not an extra, as a, whatever it is, yeah, then my suggestion is we put that, put some more money in there, whatever you think is appropriate Wayne, and that you can schedule. And that we, then on December eighth, we're going to find out what the, we're going to find out a little bit more about it.
And Rob, just for clarification, you were, you were proposing a swap, not, it was almost a budgetary swap. You're just saying more Spanish, less library, is that what you're saying?
That's what we had talked about at the L E C. I was saying, do the middle school students need the, what do they do with the librarian?
Yeah.
My middle school student says she's met the librarian once, so, you know, swap that in the budget.
Yeah, that's not, and that's not going to happen.
It's not even an F, yeah, okay, yeah, I take it back.
Can I ask a question about revenue?
Absolutely.
So because of the pandemic and preschool, we haven't had any other preschool revenue coming in? Is that, what's the preschool projection for next year? And are any of those numbers looking like, like are they all member students? Or are they students from other communities? Like what's that? Is that a possible revenue source for us?
It's definitely a possible revenue source, for sure.
It's not going to fix the budget, but.
What's that?
It's not going to fix the narrative.
No, it's not going to fix the budget. I agree with you, it is, it could bring in some revenue. Right now, we, we have just kept the preschool to Marlboro school students, instead of students coming from different communities. And I think, I think if we're still in the situation that we are now, I think we would follow that. I don't know when it comes to preschool. The, the difference between pre-pandemic was if you knew that there was twenty students on the community that would be preschool students, they were probably coming. And that's what we, that's what we experienced when we started the preschool program up until the pandemic. Right now, there's a lot of apprehension about sending a three-year-old to a public school that's pre-k eight. So we have seen less numbers in preschool, we've seen less programming. That's, that's actually been a little bit to our advantage this year, because we were able to have Patty do some different things during the day, during the week. So I think, I think I'd like to stick with that philosophy right now and just say that, you know, we're serving our community, it's invaluable, I feel, to have preschool in, in the school and we'll just keep doing the best that we can. That being said, we have a renovation that we explored about that being a revenue source. I also think that we have great programming and I'd love the opportunity for other people to, to come here and, and benefit from it.
But I think you didn't, you, you didn't count on any revenue from pre-k for next year, because it didn't, just didn't, hasn't panned out.
No, and that, that's partially, again, going to be a bit of a challenge when we look at, when we look at our numbers, is that we did last year. Because we, we all thought, just like we all saw masks on sale in July, that we were in the clearing. And, and here we are today. So, so we are going to get, we are going to get some, you know, some, some added expenses because we have.
I want to talk about the assistants from a philosophical standpoint Jude. Because that's, that's the red thing that shows up in the budget. And that's the town talk of cars in the parking lot. And I want to, I want to talk about it from, why do we have them? And I want to have a grounded philosophy around why we do. And I think that we should footnote it in the budget. And I think that we should have the open discussion with B C T V recording us about the differences when we see, when we hear from Bill, we're the only school in the supervisor union that provides assistance. So now, as I had this great conversation with Wayne, it was, we can't compare ourselves to Ward's Borough, because Ward's Borough has fifty kids, we have one hundred and one kids. It's really hard to teach twenty-two kids how to learn how to read when you're the only person in the classroom in grades one and two. Now granted, there are things we could do, I feel, but I feel like, you know, that needs to be in the budget. And I'm going to ask Wayne, as we do line items, I think that we need to come up with that and have that discussion. And I think that for this year, clearly we're budgeting for a pandemic, but we need to have that conversation. If, if we're going to see the cost increases that we're seeing, we need to figure out a plan, whether it's three years or four years, have that conversation about whether, how do we, how do we treat that assistant? We, we treat the philosophy that we're basically on a mountain and we want to attract people up the mountain and so we have to provide benefits. But is that something we can sustain? I think that those are hard conversations that we need to have. And that's one point I think I'd like to focus on at a future talk, when we're talking about solutions. But that's my question is, how do we want to treat assistants? Not in the pandemic year budget, but moving forward. And is there prep work to do for certain classrooms to not have them? Like, I don't think, in my personal opinion, that the middle school needs one. Like, you know, they didn't have one for a long time. But that's something, I feel like there could be some training there or development or something. Because it's always sort of small grades, it's a grade this year, but mostly it's like thirteen to fifteen kids. And they're older and they can manage it, manage themselves a little bit better. But we just have to start, I think, having those hard conversations, because if we're at over two dollars now, like, and there's no relief coming from the state level, we're going to be at two twenty in no time. So it's just one area I saw that popped out.
Doug, can I just make a response to that? I think partially because we're on B C T V here, is that I have always felt, and I think it's absolutely true, that the classroom assistants are hugely cost effective. And I don't mean to say that we take advantage of them, I hope that we don't. I hope we pay them fairly and that with benefits, it's a job that we will continue to attract people to come and do. But I also think they just add a massive amount of effectiveness from the education within the school here for less money than having licensed teachers doing the same thing we would do. So I just want to say that as part of the bigger conversation that you're bringing up here. I will support them and, and continue to believe that they are a wonderful asset for the community.
Jude?
Yeah, and I think the reality, it has to be balanced, you know, we can't afford what we can't afford, but I don't, we're not there yet, I don't think that's been proven. And I think that it just seems like the reality right now in the schools is some people can't even really get out to use the bathroom without a whole operation being arranged, you know? Like I'm not saying, you know, anything we don't know about, we have substitute teacher, you know, challenges, the principals helping out, you know, in classrooms. I mean, it's just, we're doing, you know, everybody's doing the best that they can with very limited staffing. And so when we acknowledge that, it gives us a chance to, I think, step back and ask ourselves, are we really kind of asking too much of this really critical institution? And, and trying to reduce the, the assistants here, you know? In my opinion, these, at least these increases can really be justified this year, given like the incredible burnout that people are experiencing. I mean, they're leaving in droves from the profession, they've just had it, they've had it. And so I think we have that narrative to tell. And if we can't sell that next year, I don't, you know, it's just.
Yeah, and I think again, my comment was that this year for next year, it was more the future, because.
Well, that was actually something.
I'm hoping COVID's not over forever, because I don't think anybody's going to be in the school if it is.
Yeah, I mean, I think we maybe have to cross that road. I know when you, when you bring on staff, you actually sort of do, you know, like to make a commitment that it's going to be at least a couple of years, you're going to have a job, two, three years for the assistants, you know? So yeah, you would like to do that, that sometimes can't happen. And especially in our school, where you look at everything anew, it feels like every year we have to make adjustments because we have eight kids versus twenty-two. So it changes what we decide to do. So we have a history of being more nimble, which is to our advantage. And, but I was also going to say, I think the narrative kind of has to include the building renovation too. So we got to start prepping people for that. So again, I don't have a solution to any of this. I'm just sort of thinking like, when I think, well, we have to be. Yeah, that's on the table for us this year, I think, because we, we know that we're going to need something for next year.
I mean, I also looked at that one FTE for science teacher. And I thought, that's the only way you can get a science teacher, I think, is to have a one FTE. Like, even though that science teacher's teaching one class. And it's basically, you know, it's, well, it's four classes.
If it were to be this year, they'd be moved all over the school to fill 100 different, you know, essential gaps.
Exactly. They're not just teaching science. And we need to be able to explain.
They're not, yeah.
Right? So that's a footnote.
Yes, I want to just say, thanks for bringing up the science teacher, is that with the ideas that we've created pre-K to eight for this science teacher, they would have to definitely clone themselves two times over of all the things that we would love to do with the science teacher, from project-based learning in the lower grades, helping to support teachers to teach science in the lower grades, because many elementary school teachers that wasn't there, that's not what they went to school for, to being an academic support teacher for the upper grades. Right now, we don't have a lot of academic support, so they could, they could fill that void as well too. So there's, there's a lot of things that that science teacher could do, but we don't want to make a job description that would lead to nobody even applying for it. And I agree, thanks for bringing that up, Doug, is that in this current employment situation that we have right now, we've got to, we've got to really take care of people and we also have to make jobs look like it's something that you want to do. So, so yes, that science teacher is much more than a science teacher and we can unpack that. I just have a chance to talk to the staff as whole is to say, what would you like the science teacher to do for our community? And it may just be middle schooler, but it might help out the rest of the school too.
Any other questions?
This is just related to after-school programming and it could be a small ad or just a suggestion from parents saying that they'd be willing to pay more, some pay more for it, but for it to be ending at a little after five o'clock, being a little bit longer to commit just for working parents. And also, yeah, that's, it's mostly that, just a lot of parents. I do want to say that this year so far has been awesome. Kids really are, my kids are so happy and I'm so happy with all the variety that's there. And also just like having it open for everybody and not be like a lottery system, which I think that's how it's been, sort of. Like, I don't know if it's been, there's like not enough spaces, I think. But maybe that's different this, this time around, Wayne?
Yeah, we've been able to.
Great. It seemed that way with this second session. The first session, it wasn't that way where it wasn't enough spaces for all the kids. So whether or not, how much that's added, I really think it would be important next year to secure that for families. Just for it to be a 5:15 pickup. It, I don't know, that used to be the case, I think, in the past.
In the past, it was 4:45.
Okay, yeah. All right. Well, the victim is being there. I know lots of parents have said to me, they'd be, they'd pay more. It's really hard to find babysitters right now, like extremely hard. So, and it's just, we've got families commuting to Boston in our community as well. And I just think it's, yeah, it would just be a really great thing. And I know mostly probably more for the older grades because I know that's a really long day, obviously, for a kindergartner. So, yeah, that's just.
I'm glad you brought that up because Wayne asked a really provocative question at the last meeting. And I don't know, we don't want to go backwards, but it was, you know, is it the role of the, of our public school systems to support families after the bell rings? And it was like a really good conversation.
Responsibility, I think is the word.
Responsibility is stronger than role. Yeah, but it was provocative. It was like, let's talk about this and let's have the conversation. And I think all the reasons that you just stated are why we put it in there as adding FTEs. I don't know if you want to go back to that special slide, but, you know, we basically have built into the budget, you know, extending the day for teachers and paying them. So we have increased it. I don't know. I think that, that my feeling and the sentiment of that meeting was that there's no amount of money that families can pay. I think it's like way too high.
To just have it be a longer.
In my opinion, because even when we, even the stuff we charge now, it's so small, it has zero impact. I mean, it's like a .00006 impact on the budget, so.
Well, I can give you some numbers.
Yeah. I mean, what do you think, what do you think about that, Wayne, in terms of like, can we, can we support the FTEs extension with dollars from families? Because it's really about the base that we have to charge. We don't have a base to charge.
We, so we, we do get some revenue for the year. It is, you know, it's probably about 25%, maybe 20, 25%, would you say, Lori, around that, that pay for the programming? And so it's, it's a piece. Right now, laughter is more expensive than what we paid in the past. So it's around $30,000 right now. In the past, we paid about $25,000. And a lot of that has to do with that, the after-school programming folks are getting benefits, which is, which is a good thing. At the same exact time, we just had the laughter coordinator from the WCSU up here this week. And they were blown away, not only at our programming, but how organized it was because we have teachers now teaching kids after school who are trained, who know those kids, who know them during the day, who know their background, who know, you know, if they had a bad morning, like all those pieces so they can help support the students so much better emotionally and socially, leading to that they're not going home completely zombed out at 4:30. So there's, there's a lot of good benefits to this. I don't know if we looked at, we could give you, if you would like, if one of your questions is, let's, let's go till 5 o'clock, I could look into that and then add that to the budget. And we can, we can give you a pretty, a pretty good like comparison, 4:30 and 5 o'clock. And I also like that's asked of some of the teachers too, like, could you, could you live, could you make it to 5 o'clock as well too? That was part of the reason why we pulled back a little bit, those 15 minutes, was that some of our teachers are coming in and pulling 10-hour days.
I understand that too. And I see that that's harder, for sure, for, for the teachers, yeah.
I was just going to say that same thing, having worked on the playground with teachers, many of the teachers who were in the building all day long and even now, the way it is, that those teachers are pretty much fried by the time they get out of here. And that because they started early and had, so, you know, who's going to be, who is going to staff? I don't know that.
Yeah, it turns into, it's complicated. Because it's like now, do you want to bring outsiders, like educators or like a, you know, a young person who might like do a program and have an idea? So do you bring someone else in? And I understand that that makes it more complicated for the programming. But I don't know. It's just more just from the sentiment and like the holistic point of view of parents and just like juggling a lot too. So, yeah. Another thing I thought of, and I wasn't sure if this would be a budget thing of like getting a, I don't know if it's ever been thought of, was like having like a group of kids that do activities in Rattleboro. And if for people who are working in Rattleboro, is there a way to like get kids closer to Rattleboro, transportation-wise? I don't know. That's like a, I don't think that's a budget conversation. That's probably something different. But that's just another idea about getting kids for other after-school activities, if that's possible.
Something you mentioned earlier was especially for the older kids. And something that I didn't occur of, I set up this whole program, we fundraised, we built it. And in my mind, it never occurred to me until the signups happened, that how many of the older kids are just old enough to be home alone. And so like we started, you know, and so it all worked out fine because what we do now is great. But I, in my mind, I was like, oh, I'm starting something for the junior high. And we haven't had, I don't want to say we haven't, we do have one, one. So while, so just in thinking about who we're serving, I wonder if it isn't just mainly the younger kids. But I think I heard you say especially for the older kids.
I think so. Well, I just think they can handle a longer day.
A longer day, right. But they traditionally have not signed up for after-school because they're allowed to be home for two hours at the end of the day or something. And so.
Yeah, and I guess that's more like, what are the choices for those kids? Do they want to stay and do?
Yeah, and that would be awesome. The little kids, as someone who leads a program that's, you can say all sudan, but like that's athletic. I mean, I just like, I mean, they're just fried and, and. And I mean, ours isn't as athletic as yours. We're just walking in the woods throwing frisbees. But it's, it's, it's pretty like, like it's, it's care for most, most of what I do is care.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's an important thought to say, is school responsible for that? And I understand for sure, yeah. I'm sure families think that too. Are they? I don't know. Like, it's just so much of like how to coordinate your work life and your home life and pandemic life altogether.
You know, also the pandemic that's having an impact on the babysitting aspect as well.
And just to clarify, I support your conclusion. I'm just trying to figure out how we get there with these other things. So, yeah, like, yeah, I think the board does too.
When I was on the Meeting House School Board, we talked a lot about using the school space and just parents hiring a babysitter or childcare. So I don't know if that was, would ever be a possibility, just parents who need that extra half hour, hire, find someone, you know, something to be discussed later.
Yeah, I think that's like a, as a community, we can figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, if you really think of the school as we should, which is that it's a municipality building and I can't reuse by people, you know, that's something, a really good idea, Rob, I think, for that. So are we directing Wayne to come up with that or are we going to, do you want to extend it to five? Do we, just to see what the cost would be?
Personal teachers, I don't think he should do that.
Sorry, what was that?
I don't think he should do that.
Well, I'm more worried about the teacher burnout than anything.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think you should go back to the teachers and ask them.
No, don't even ask them. I don't think that's the right thing to do right now. Do not ask them that. I think that's rude, honestly.
So last time we were here, I was trying to understand, but last time we were here, Jamie, Jamie was here and Jamie said, I love this because it allows me to do more, you know, and so I'm just curious, like, how does that? Is it some teachers that might want it and some might not? Or you think, don't even ask, even though Jamie last time said, kind of sound like the opposite?
I am so entrenched also in teacher burnout right now.
Sure, of course.
That asking them to stay for an extra half an hour to accommodate, you know, other people who are working and like, I just feel like that's a huge ask when you're already exhausted. And it's like, if, that's like some person, like, yeah, the teachers care about the kids. They care immensely about the kids and they don't want to disappoint the kids. But that's like putting them in a very awkward position because it's almost like, well, the parents really need to work. Well, it's like, well, I'm working too. You know, so it's like devaluing what they're doing. They're working too and they have lives outside of this building too.
So just to clarify though, we were talking about Jamie who appreciate the extra hours because she's not full-time. And so I'm not sure, so I'm just thinking, and maybe I'm wrong, but I'm thinking of Jamie, I'm thinking of Cynthia. And I, and I don't know how, Steve is, Steve would be an example of someone who maybe we won't want to ask more of. But I'm just wondering, is there, do we really want to say, don't even ask any of them when it seems like Jamie last time said, I so appreciate this opportunity? Could we designate the full-time people like Steve? Like, we don't want to ask Steve. But I think, unless I'm counting wrong, that two out of the three teachers that are doing after-school are actually part-time.
I mean, I know Jethlyn's doing it. I know Liz is doing it.
What's Jethlyn doing for after? Oh, this next session? Next session?
Yeah, it's like, I just, I don't know. I, maybe it's because I'm being very sensitive to it right now because I eat, sleep and breathe it every day.
Yep.
And I, you know, regularly have teachers crying in my office because they're fried.
So perhaps there's two categories. There's part-time employees that want more hours in order to get more benefits, like Jamie, which Jamie expressed last time. And maybe then there's also this other category of people that we, last thing we want to say is ask them for more time.
I'm 100, if people want to be more employed, like, and more for part-time employees, I'm totally down because that's a more attractive thing for us to offer as employers. I love that. I think that's fantastic. So if there are part-time employees that want to work more, I think that's fine. But do not ask that of full-time employees.
I guess I'm thinking that what we, what the question was, actually you posed originally, Selina, is are we going to ask Wayne to, to cost out how much that would cost? And, and if the answer is no, then we don't need to. If the answer is yes, we don't need to discuss who it's going to be or to whom it's even going to be approached. The school board, we look at a number, it's going to be $10,000 and say, we want to include that in our budget for the advantage of the possibility that it could go to five, or we don't want to include it in our budget. And then we, if we do, then we could go forward. But it's going to be around 10,000 bucks. But, you know, would Wayne consider just giving us that ballpark number so we could address it as a?
And again, I don't think, I think the suggestion is it's not coming from the budget. It's going to be coming from the people that need that extra half hour, essentially. But also, I feel like the first point is talk to the teachers and see if it's even a possibility.
Oh, I just want to say that some parents absolutely need to go till five and my kid is tired out at 4:30. So just putting that back in the mix.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously not a whole, not everybody's needs.
Not everyone wants to go to five.
Yeah.
Of course. It sounds like with the, with this new awesome like committee, like we are being asked to consider it. And so like, yeah, so whatever else we think about the possibility, if we could just take the numbers, get the numbers, then we can come back and talk about feasibility and then add in all the other factors about who could we ask which teachers, teachers or ask volunteer teachers or whatever. But it sounds like, like parents are asking their committee, they've come here to say, this is what we've heard and what we want to request.
Can I, can I, sorry, I know you have something to say. Is it okay?
Yeah.
I feel like some of this is anecdotal, like, you know, there are some people that are saying this. There are some people that are saying their kids are fried. Maybe it's something that needs to be like, you know, family surveys or something like that, like, put it out for like families participating in after-school, like, what is the need? And, you know, then maybe it goes back to, you know, okay, where is the, like, where is the community connection? Where parents who like, I can pick up and I can pick up these other kids, like where's that community connection that's not happening? So we are now relying on the school to stay open for an extra half an hour? Like, so that, I mean, this goes back to your question, like, is it the school's responsibility to provide care for parents who are working? You know, so I think like that's part of what FTA is trying to do, this part of what the LEC is trying to do. We're trying to like re-establish community when in the past two years, we've been isolated, you know, and we have new people, new community members and, you know, so we're really trying to re-establish our sense of community in a new way. So trying to like get people engaged in activities outside of the school through the different groups, the different classrooms, classroom, you know, functions happening, I think is really, really key right now to try to like make that happen for the future. So that way, maybe next year, we don't have to ask people to stay later or how, you know, there's something else that comes out of it. Because like, oh, I know that like on Mondays, I can pick up and I can pick up, you know, three other families' kids and they can just come and grab them from my house when they're ready because it'll feel safer, because everyone can come home with me. And, you know, you know, life is going to change and evolve. And I just feel like that sense of community is missing right now. And I feel like parents are like, like we all are because we're all like wigging out all the time.
That's what I was going to say. I was just, it's very hard to connect right now with all of them.
Super hard to connect. It's super hard.
I think that's probably the fatigue of the parents of being like, why can't it just be?
Yeah.
So I can have the, you know, it just, I think that's, that's it. So we would never want to impose on the teachers at all.
No, I know.
So I think balancing who's doing or even if it is a thing, so.
I think the survey of need is a really good idea.
Yeah.
I think that it's worth exploring.
Sorry, we had to jump over there.
But first, do we want Lori to go home and enjoy her evening? Are we done with her? Or do we have any more questions? We have 10 minutes left in our budget discussion. Dan?
Yeah, I was wondering though, the deficit, projected deficit coming forward from this year, shouldn't that be included somehow in next year's budget so that we don't just start the year already with a zero balance, a negative balance?
Yeah, so I think it's important to talk about this year in light of this budget for next year. So what I sent out today showed about 189 as a minimum.
Overcharged, overcharged.
Deficit. You have 275,000 less the, I don't know, I figured that in. So you have that to offset right now, but with, you know, you'll, you're just overspending and you're spending into that fund balance. Does that make sense? So you're not going to carry it over.
Right. So it technically is going to be a zero, but.
I would count on zero fund balance going forward because it's going to get down pretty close and you probably don't want to be thinking about using any of that fund balance for this particular budget.
Okay.
The other thing I just wanted to mention too, and I don't have a lot of familiarity with this fund, is the future tuition reserves. You do have $42,000 in that reserve. And I'm assuming that you put money away for times like when you have the $129,000 increase. So that also, just be thinking about that could probably be applied to fiscal year '23's budget as well.
Especially because it can be directly applied to the category to which it was originally designated, which is high school tuition.
Let's look at that fund. Yeah, let's talk about that.
Yeah. And I do have, I just got the auditor's entries today and have made them, so those numbers are pretty solid. So that, that's where you stand right now. So your deficit will probably be covered. And, but you're still going to be looking at the $500,000 increase. And revenues will probably be down, as Wayne was saying. I didn't, I thought you have. I didn't, I thought you have a lot to talk about tonight without bringing in revenues and tax rate at this point.
December, yeah, we'll talk about that.
Because we don't, we don't have a lot of numbers, and even on the April, it'll be tight. We'll have a big yield, and I can probably get pretty close to a equalized pupil number, but, yeah, so I didn't, I didn't go that far, but I do know revenues will be down a little bit from the pre-K tuition. And food service is really, it's, it's very hard to tell right now. Right now, actually could make money on the food service, the way it's looking right now because of the federal government making it free at a higher reimbursement rate. But next year, that may all go away, and we might get back down to where we are. So it would be nice if it stayed. That's something to hope for. So that's really what I have for you as far as where you are today. I think Wayne did, you know, a fabulous job about showing that it really is, what's happening now is what you're seeing reflected in that fiscal year '23 budget. And then the tuition, the tuition kind of caught both of us off-guard. I honestly thought you were gonna be like flat or maybe a little under, and so that one did.
And tuition could change at the last minute too. I mean, people could move. That usually happens sometimes.
Yeah, well, and that's what we're seeing.
Yeah.
Is that, is that we have some families moving into high school students.
Yeah. So tuition could always go up, or it could go down.
It could go down, just like last year went down, and we overbudgeted by $80,000, which is, you know, part of our, part of our surplus.
Right, part of that 275 is, is tuition.
Yeah.
And, and you do have for this year, because I don't believe at this point you're gonna hire an academic support teacher through.
This year.
Right, for this year. So that will be actually, and that was in that figure, that'll be coming back to Marlboro. When we go into '23, now we're part of that bigger system of the MTSS budget, which is through WCSU. And just so everybody knows, that the WCSU budget that was approved can be found on WyndhamCentral.org. So if you want to take a look through that and see where the assessments are coming from that are in this budget, that's a good place to go.
I have a quick last question, which is, you've seen Marlboro, you've probably seen everybody else, but where are we in terms of districts? Are we the only one skyrocketing, or are there others skyrocketing?
Well, I haven't got to West River yet, but that will be a skyrocket.
Oh.
And there, they have lost a lot of students, so, yeah, then it's not gonna be pretty there. Wyndham is, you know, the parent group is showing up to the meetings and they're, you know, sitting here doing what you're doing, is saying, this is what we need to run the school, and what we want for our children. So they're adding quite a bit into their budget for the first time really in a long time. And, let's see, River Valleys, I'm just, I'm like 90% done with their budget, and they're, they're actually coming in pretty like 3% or something, 3% to 4%, so they're holding the line.
But what was their tax rate last year? Because they weren't like 70 like us or whatever, they were higher, like 60.
Where are they going?
Yeah, they were, they were.
They got a tax base.
They are higher than you guys. You guys were like 60.
Well, they have a lot of people move because of COVID. They had a huge spike in population.
They did, and all of them have left, or not all of them, but a lot of them have left.
For real?
So they're also going to see a reduction in their equalized pupils, and, but they have the, they also are going to see the reduction in the tuition for this year, so, yeah. So that's where everybody's at right now.
Thank you, Lori. Do you want to keep her here all night?
No, I just want to make one comment about high school tuition. I did notice in here that about, certainly like a third of the high school tuition we paid goes to private schools, and two-thirds, maybe more than two-thirds, I think goes to the public schools. So I always think that's interesting. I think it's a, you know, it's, it's commentary worth mentioning when people say, well, you're a, you're a tuition town, but most of the kids here go to public schools.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Keep your stamina, we have three more meetings.
Thank you so much, please. We're only, we're only three meetings compared to what Lori and Lori will be going to with.
Three more, you go up.
This is the third meeting this week. Right, or your fourth.
You love budget season, you know it.
Every year I say, am I gonna make it through another one?
Wayne, okay, thank you for letting me tell that, but I want to, do want to bring it back, because Wayne had something to say regarding the after-school, so.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that led us to this new programming was that we, we did make the transition from more of a childcare program to a high-quality enrichment program. And I, and I think that's part of the reason why we, we went back to 4:30, and also the reason why we only go to 3:30 on our short Mondays. And I do very much sympathize with families. I have three kids of my own, I work there, Lori has a full-time job, but to balance out that, that we have, we have professional staff offering high-quality programming for an hour and 15 minutes after-school with kids who have already had pretty much a six-and-a-half-hour lecture, or work, or whatever you want to call it, I, I think really is the best we can do. And if we start stretching that beyond it, we're, we're gonna be diluting our programming because we're gonna have to increase, increase the programming. We're gonna put the teachers in, in a bit of a challenge. They don't leave at 4:30. They leave at 5:15, sometimes even later after picking up, so that if we're asking them to, to go, we're asking families to go home late to dinner. So I, again, I really, I hear you, and I very much sympathize with that. It was even really hard for me to say the cutoff for on these short Mondays was 3:30. Well, you can ask Gail. It took me a week to make the decision. But I really want to go back to the, the philosophy of this and the reason why we're, we're, we're paying for our teachers to stay, which is that it's high-quality enrichment programming, not a place for, for students to, to get their, to get childcare for families.
And that has been great, so.
Yeah.
And I understand it's, it's a challenge, but, yeah, the quality has been so great. It's way less chaotic than picking your kid up in the outback and trying to find every article for the clothing, not knowing what the heck is happening, so that's positive, for sure, so.
So we are at 8 o'clock. Best and final questions, any? But remember, next time is gonna be the yield and potentially equalized pupil rates, and we'll really be able to see the full line item budget as opposed to, you know, Wayne's wonderful spreadsheet. So that being said, we're gonna do some pay order, but if you have any last thing, we're gonna do the boring stuff now.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're sure you don't want to.
We're gonna approve some minutes.
This is what we have to go through in terms of.
Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Thanks for watching.
It's for these awesome committees that you're running, it's so great.
All right, I'll take, Peter, we got some minutes, and I noticed some problems.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but we have to do some cleanup.
Let's go to people, read them.
On the WCSU board page, I noticed, in terms of minutes.
Which date is this?
Well, first, I'll entertain a motion from the board to approve as drafted the 10:21 minutes.
Second.
Moved by Selena, second, or sorry, yes, seconded by Dan. Those are up and drafted. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
And then we have one, two, three, four draft minutes up on the website that I think we need to, we need to approve. And we could do it maybe in one fell swoop, because I think they're weird meetings. Now, when was the September 6th Keith meeting? I thought we approved that. Peter?
Hello?
Maybe, maybe you and I can connect after this meeting, but there's just a lot of draft minutes from like June and August that are on the, the website, and I think that we may have approved them.
Give me some dates.
There's.
Let me put on my.
Do you have, do you have notes of like what we've approved, or what, or do you have to dig through the minutes?
I'm looking at the actual archive of minutes which have been posted.
August 19th.
So 8/19.
And 8/18.
Oh, I have 8/18 is the draft.
Which is the retreat.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm not looking at the approved, I'm looking at the drafted. I apologize. You have better access than I do with this second to the approved ones. You could tell me what's not approved, I can go fetch it.
Yeah. What's not approved is 8/19, 8/18, June 23rd, it's an emergency meeting.
Oh, I don't have that.
And 9/16, which is a regular.
Oh, I do have that. I have that draft, 2/3, okay?
So.
9/16?
9/16.
Yes, that was probably.
Okay, then those just need to be cleaned up on the website.
Okay, I've got copies of those now in your folder.
And do we need a motion to approve them, or have we, seems like we should, we would have done this, but.
We've approved them, have we not?
I would have thought so.
I thought I, the ones that I did, I thought we approved.
Okay, well, Peter, I'm just giving you those as an assignment.
Well, here's what happens. I, you make an approval, I copy the one out of the actual archive where the draft ones are, and I post it for Meg, and Meg posts it as approved.